We're back. This is our budget work session. I'm just going to turn it right over to our distinguished finance team, the Michelles.
Before I turn it over to Michelle to go over the first few bullets that we have, I wanted to hand out a couple of things. Section six, page one, we did find an error and I have some replacement pages for you. Then the other thing I wanted to show you...
Oh, this is section four.
Section four, yes, page two.
Section four. You said section six.
I'm sorry, section four, page two. I didn't have my glasses on.
Alright. You said section six, huh?
I think it was section four.
I didn't have my glasses on, I'm sorry.
Page six. Sweet. Do you have a sheet like this for the enterprise fund too?
We will. We'll have one for every fund. And then the other page that I passed around is just a sample modification sheet. As we start making changes or as you start proposing changes to the budget that we have submitted, we'll have sheets like this for each of the funds. That should detail every one of your changes and how it affects the bottom line, the adjusting entries for the budget surplus or deficit. Just wanted to give you a sample of what that would look like. And the code on the side would be for expenditures or revenues and it'll show how that original budget amount of 618, for example, for the general fund will go up or down based on any recommendations that you make over the next few weeks. And this is just a sample for you to look at and you're welcome to use it to write on for other things. But again, we'll have a sheet for every fund.
Section nine, page one, two, three.
And Michelle Hepburn, our budget officer, is going to handle the first few bullets on our agenda for tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to her tonight.
Okay, and I apologize, we'll probably go through these fairly quickly, just in the essence of time. The first thing on the agenda is to cover the parks CIP. If we turn to...
Michelle, if we could, Rodney needed to leave.
Okay.
So...
That's okay.
Start with the mayor and council, can we just jump to utilities, which is the item two, and then when Rodney can be back in with the mayor and council, we can cover parks with Rodney at that point.
Okay.
Sure.
That's fine.
I don't think there's anything particularly controversial in there, but we would like to review those with you because there's some important community initiatives there.
Okay. Well, for the utility funds and enterprise funds, in section four, which was referenced in the sheet, you'll see that each fund has some charts and some detailed information, department description, program summaries, performance indicators. But what we'll do for review purposes, just to kind of keep us on track for time, is go to the financial projection, which is section seven. Because in section seven, we can see everything there. We can see the CIPs for each of the funds and we won't have to flip back and forth as much. So in section seven, page fifteen would be, or even page fourteen where the assumptions are, is where we will start. The highlights for electric, and I'm just going to highlight some of the big-ticket items. For fiscal year fourteen, the revenue is going to show a decrease. And this decline in revenue is a function of two things. One is a result of lower consumption, with two of our primary businesses being gone a full year in fiscal year fourteen. And in addition to that, we have a sixteen percent savings in our wholesale power purchase rate. So in turn, we will give that same savings back to our customers. So lower consumption and lower rate. So we're going to see our revenue decline over current fiscal year thirteen budget. On the expense side, under operating expenses, about middle ways down the page, the big-ticket items there, the purchased power line, again, that's where we'll see our expense, our sixteen percent savings that we're getting in the contract. The general and administrative categories, we do have a slight increase of just two percent overall. This increase is a result of rise in employee benefits. And just as a brief reminder, the rise in employee benefits was twelve point one percent for health insurance, five point one percent for dental, five percent for workers' comp, and that's citywide. In addition, we have a little bit of salary contingency in the electric fund, much like we do on the general fund side. Further down the page, we'll see increase, decrease, and retained earnings. And for fiscal year proposed budget, we have a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in earnings. And a little bit further down, we have capital outlay, which is all their CIP projects. It is a total of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And within the electric fund, there isn't any one specific project that's high dollar or anything really that was new over any of the previous years. Most of the projects here are to help improve transmission, increase efficiency, and help minimize some outage times. So after we take into consideration our capital outlay, which all of those projects are being funded directly through the electric fund, that brings us to net deficit in fiscal year fourteen for five hundred and seven thousand. And then in the out-years for the electric fund, you'll notice that the total service charges, as well as when the operating expense for purchased power, is flat. No increase. The only increases that you'll see are some rise in depreciation and some overall rise in general and administrative expenses, again, for employee benefits and salaries. We project at the end of fiscal year fourteen that we'll start with a cash balance of approximately three point seven million and end with three point two million. On the very next page...
Is the desire to work through the out-years to work down that fund balance?
The cash balance?
Mm-hmm.
That's not the desire, however, because we have revenues built in, it's flat because they're dependent on PSC guidelines, we have operating expenditure increases built in. So it's spending down the fund balance, even though, once those years hit and once we get approval from Public Service Commission, revenues and service charges will probably increase. We have to keep it flat for the Public Service Commission.
So the amount shown at six ninety-two at five years out isn't what will really occur?
Most likely not.
We'll have to make adjustments, but we want to avoid that situation.
Correct.
But we can make adjustments now, like we could in other fund accounts because of PSC rules.
Exactly.
Understand?
On this second page, if we flip, what you'll see there is all the individual CIP projects listed in the amounts for the electric fund. And if anybody has any specific questions or if we needed to look at any of those projects in the capital improvement section, which is section nine, you'll see that there are detailed sheets for those. Begins on page one hundred and nineteen. But again, they don't really have anything new, nothing really out of the ordinary, no specific project, high dollar, nothing greater than sixty thousand, and that's for overall circuit upgrades.
Do we have any questions about the electric fund? Okay, we'll move on to the water fund then.
Okay, the water fund. The water fund, the primary story on revenue in the water fund is that we are in our final, fiscal year fourteen will be the final year of our current five-year rate schedule that will end on June thirty of two thousand and fourteen. So we'll notice an increase in our projected revenue over our fiscal year thirteen budget. And again, on average, that increase was five percent for services provided inside the city and six and a half percent increase for services outside the city. On the operating expense side, the story and most of this is, again, all of it is rising benefit costs and a salary contingency that we left within this fund as well, based on a number of employees and current salary. You will notice depreciation expense, we had a huge jump. And depreciation expense, if you look at some of our history, from fiscal year eleven to fiscal year twelve, is a result of several big projects that have been completed. We anticipate that depreciation expense will continue to see big jumps, specifically once we get to fiscal year fifteen, as we complete the Wilson plant upgrades. Further down the page, for fiscal year fourteen, you will see a one and a half million dollars included in grants and aid of construction. Again, that's for our RC Wilson plant upgrade, our massive upgrade that we're doing. We're anticipating a one and a half million dollar grant and also a one and a half million dollar principal forgiveness, which is not yet reflected because that would not occur until fiscal year nineteen. So with everything else considered, and I jumped through one thing that we did mention when we were in the general fund, we have included in the water fund to transfer to the general fund, and this is to pay a water fund dividend, which we would bring back and discuss in further detail with spreadsheets at a later date.
Is that dividend associated with any specific equation as it pertains to inside-outside rates and the jurisdictional authority for full faith and credit as it relates to the debt service?
The dividend relates to, has a number of equations built into it, and if you look in the fiscal policies, the actual dividend policy is located in the budget book. The primary factors that need to be looked at are water fund's ability to pay its debt for future infrastructure upgrades. And we want to make sure that if a dividend does take place, that we're not jeopardizing the water fund's ability to pay not only operating, but its debt service and infrastructure upgrades. There is a formula for that, as well as some other things that we'll need to look at, and we need to have our financial statements completed for fiscal year twelve. So we'll probably come back to you in November or December with that.
And it's more based on overall total operating expenses, instead of breaking it down between jurisdictions inside city versus outside city on the revenue side. Looking at where their operating expense is, looking at fund balance.
And fiscal policies...
And looking at projections for debt services.
Yeah, I think the fiscal policies are in the glossary section at the back.
They are, very, very back. Increase, decrease, and retained earnings. In fiscal year fourteen, proposed budget, water fund will be one point nine million, almost just a little bit shy of two million dollars. And then if we look, they have some sizable projects in the capital outlay area, a total of thirteen point four million. And I'll cover like three of those real brief in a minute. Of those projects, the thirteen point four million that we're going to spend, we are looking to do bond financing that totals ten point eight four. You can see that right below the outlay where it says additional funding. So with all that considered, that would mean the water fund would have a deficit for the year of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to pay in for all the projects. The three major projects, you can see it on the page just opposite, on page nineteen at the very top, their projects are broken out, there's a summarized schedule, which says Schedule A. And then there's more detail below where those projects are broken into growth versus non-growth. One point two million dollars in distribution services, which is project six fifty-three, all that we're anticipating to do with a bond fund, bond financing. The RC Wilson plant, phase four, total that we're anticipating expense to incur next year is nine point six million. The majority of that is a loan through MDE. Another met part that is separate, which would be our SCADA improvements, it's the very last line, it's project eight two oh, it's showing is one point two million. Of that one point two million, eight hundred thousand is SCADA upgrades related specifically for the RC Wilson plant. And again, a portion of that project would be included in our MDE bond financing.
I have a couple of questions on the water fund.
Sure.
The first is, in section four, it references a loss of city and in-city and outside-city customers, seven hundred customers decrease inside the city and four hundred customers outside of the city. So we're losing eleven hundred customers that we have connected to our system.
That loss would probably primarily be related to foreclosures and vacant properties within the city.
Right, I talked about, so we take the meters out...
We don't take the meters out, we just turn off... Oh, we do, I'm sorry. Okay.
And, but there's still, there's still a connection on our system, we just don't account for them?
They're not getting any water service from us, so they're no longer a customer account. They have the ability to have water connection once the property becomes filled again, but you know, once the property is vacant, we do remove the meter and they're no longer a customer at that point. Service would be available again once the property is sold or becomes, you know, another...
Okay. My curiosity is, we set up our capital program and we base some connection cost on association with buildup of the system. And then we reduce that buildup by eleven hundred customers. And so maybe my base question is, the quarterly cost is only associated with operations. Is that a fair assumption? Okay, so that all of that quarterly cost that a customer pays is simply going to the annual operations of the system? It's not associated with debt service at all?
A portion of it could be, but the debt service is primarily covered through benefit charges and other types of things like that.
If we're removing customers from the system and part of that quarterly amount is going for debt service on the system, then we've basically removed that entity from the system that isn't paying to that debt service, that we've accounted for it being a connected entity.
Well, the number of customers coming on and off every year are going to fluctuate simply based on the economy. And right now, the economy is down, we are seeing a number of foreclosures. So as the economy picks back up, we're going to see that number not only reverse, but start going the other way, so it's...
Yeah, I'm just not familiar with taking a customer off of a system once they're connected. And then the second question is, in section eight, you have shown a, under finance, a new fee, utility, monthly late fee.
That is a new fee that we're proposing to help recoup some of the collection costs, and we are going to come back to you on May this, later this month, or next month, to discuss that fee.
Okay, so, but there's no figure in here, even though it's being proposed, so I'm just curious. If there's no figure in here at this point, that means that you haven't accounted for any revenue in here?
No, not yet, not at this time.
Okay, that answers that question.
No question, but an observation, I don't want people to think that the water fund's in deficit. The four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is strictly for next year's operations. There is still a nine million dollar cash balance, of which more than half, almost five million, is unrestricted. And we need that for our bond rating, for emergencies, and for, you know, financial security, but it's well, we're well secured. So the four eighty-five is a fluctuation.
Right.
It's not that the system's in deficit, I just want to make that clear.
Right, yeah, it's still at an operating surplus, the operating surplus is two hundred and twenty-two.
Right, and the cash balance is...
Right, and you'll see in the out-years that the cash balance is actually being spent down as some of the projects continue forward and finish up.
And we start to pay on those expenses.
What's the rate assumption for the out-years?
They vary. Two percent, MDE was two percent over twenty-year terms.
No, 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 the rate increase, the change in water rates.
We assumed a five percent average, which is what we had seen in past. Of course, that's going to depend on the rate study and everything that will occur in fiscal year fourteen.
And actually, we staggered it, we did five percent in fifteen, three percent in sixteen and seventeen, and then five percent again in eighteen.
Yeah, I was going to say, some of those numbers don't look like five to me, that's why I was asking.
It's included in the assumptions, I kind of whizzed over that part.
Do you have any other questions on the water fund? All right, we'll move on to the wastewater fund.
Wastewater, page twenty-two, revenue, much like the water fund side, wastewater is on a current five-year rate schedule that is going to end June thirty of two thousand and fourteen. And on average, that means a five percent increase for inside-city customers and a three percent for outside-city customers. Our projections here do include rate increases in the future years, fiscal year fifteen through eighteen.
The same formula that we use for the water fund, five, three, three, five?
Fourteen, five, three, three.
Fourteen, five, I'm sorry, fourteen percent in fiscal year fifteen.
And then five, three, three.
Two questions as it relates to this fund and section four, is, and this is reflected in a number of the utility accounts, is our contractual services are increasing in a number of those enterprise accounts. This one in particular is increasing three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
And that's Senegro, it's our annual contract to actually operate the wastewater treatment plant that's...
The pelletizer.
The pelletizers.
Okay. And then the second is, service charges unbilled. In eleven, twelve, we recorded that as a hundred and forty-four thousand, but we didn't record it for this year. Is that because we don't record it separately anymore, or because we don't know what that amount may be?
Because it's a number that we do at the end of the year.
Okay.
For audit purposes, but for budgeting purposes, we just left the annual rate increase. And that's just a snapshot of time, once our fiscal year ends, how many accounts that we didn't have built at that point, June thirty.
I don't understand the proposed change, projected change percentages, mine's reading fourteen percent.
Right. Fourteen for, it was fourteen percent for fiscal year fifteen, and then five percent...
To fiscal year fifteen.
And then three percent, three percent. So fourteen percent from fiscal year fourteen through fiscal year fifteen. Double-digit.
If you look at the water fund's history and operating income line, the wastewater fund has been operating at a loss for the last few years. In order to make the wastewater fund become a little more sustainable, we need to do something to increase its revenues, and a substantial rate increase would bring us closer to making operating revenues cover operating expenditures. It's important for the rating agencies to see that the utility funds are self-supporting, and that means that revenues must equal operating expenditures.
And would you be able to provide what the figure is for that fourteen percent? In other words, between now and then, what that fourteen percent is going to equate to, you know, hard cash-wise?
It would be...
Is it just the difference between the two there?
Yeah, it's just the difference between the two, one point four, one point five million.
I would be interested to see what that amount is in comparison to what we have remained uncollected from billing.
We are going to go over the process for collections on May the seventh, so we'll come back to you with that information. Do you have anything else you wanted to cover before I ask that question?
No.
Okay, do we have any other questions on the wastewater fund?
Again, their projects are all laid out on page twenty-three as well, so that we can see those. If not, we'll move on to...
Anything else in utilities, we went through them pretty quick. Is there anything else we need to highlight, or anything you'd like us to revisit in some way at this point?
All right, I'm going to, you don't have anything? Okay, well, if you have any questions, please email Michelle or I, stop by, finance, we'd be happy to talk with you one-on-one or get on the phone and answer any questions through email. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce, we have some potential positions for fiscal year fourteen that he'd like to discuss.
Yeah, there's two positions that we included in your packet today that we'd at least like you to consider. They're not in the budget, but it's an effort to try to address some operating needs in the general fund operations, public works and police. I mentioned the public works position back on April ninth, just to give you a heads-up. Mark's done a memo in your packet for the police recruitment position. So if we could take a few minutes and have Eric come forward, just to summarize his thoughts in terms of a need for a position. What we're talking about is, in this case, he's got five unfunded positions in public works, probably the highest percentage of any department in the city with unfunded positions. And he's gone a long time without these positions, so it's a very important part of our operations, public works. Think it's something we need to look at with Eric. We may or may not be able to afford these two positions in the coming year, but we wanted to at least get some discussion with the mayor and council, so we can start to get a sense of direction here.
The position I'm looking for to expand upon is in our building maintenance. In the memo, outlined the number of properties in which we're responsible for, including the building we're in, you know, City Hall. And the, our property manager at our building maintenance, I'll say, that we're doing is being handled by a supervisor that handles traffic control and building maintenance. It didn't used to always be that way, the history quickly was, we had a supervisor that handled just traffic control, which is our signals and signs and lines and that sort of thing. And we had a separate supervisor that handled our building maintenance. And the person that handled our building maintenance used to be in parks, when parks was part of public works. When parks was split off back in, I think, two thousand and three, that supervisor went to parks and handled that building maintenance alone. For a while, I handled the building maintenance, until we hired a new supervisor and I combined the traffic control slash building maintenance. But at that time, we didn't own the number of buildings that we owned downtown. We've, you know, recently purchased forty-three fifty-three, West Washington, sixty West Washington, thirty-six forty, and so on. And I have the list of properties that we have and the number of tenants. What I don't list in that is also the number of vacancies. For example, thirty-six forty has potential to have five or six more tenants. Sixty West Washington, once the incubator's up and running, will have more tenants. The bead company just came, we just purchased that property. So we've definitely increased the number of tenants in which we have to respond to. And what I'm looking for is in a management position, so I can take the traffic control slash building maintenance person to suit separate positions. One will handle just traffic control, and this new position would handle our property maintenance issues. So it doesn't have, it doesn't help us with field personnel, per se, but it helps us handle the issues in which we're just being overwhelmed on with the property management issues.
Traffic control person who's, who would now have fifty, or a hundred percent more time, fifty percent more of their time.
Right.
Is that person, is it just maintenance of the system, or do they get involved with the operation, timing, and...
We do get involved in it.
... function of the system?
Yeah, we definitely get involved with the timing, but we don't get nearly as involved as we could. We simply don't have the time. The person does not have the time to devote to that.
I understand, but the person would be working with engineering when those things get out of whack.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. And we do that now, we just don't do it on the scale, we'd like to do it on, we just, you know, we just don't have the time for it, so, or that person doesn't have the time for it.
This position would also be prioritated between several different funds. The portion that would impact the general fund would be about twelve thousand six hundred just for this position, however, based on his memo, because there was another position that would be allocated back to the general fund. We believe the total impact on the general fund would be sixty-five thousand for this position.
The other thing that we picked up in two thousand and eight, when I took over the parking system, is our apartment didn't really handle the decks at the time, and in two thousand and eight, the A and E deck had just come online for, I guess it came online in January two thousand and seven. So, you know, we've not only picked up the buildings, we've also... we've also picked up two parking decks, which need repair and maintenance and beyond the general, just cleaning and such. So, you know, we have a number of personnel that are very qualified and do a great job. They just need, we just need to focus more on our property maintenance since we've, since we've picked up more properties. I mean, that's the bottom line. We just have more properties to maintain and we need to focus more on that. Hopefully one day, we'll, the economy will improve and we'll be able to add some field personnel that'll help, but really need somebody to focus on our properties to, to really, you know, we put, the city's investing a lot of money downtown on a lot of these properties and we need to make sure they're, they're kept up, put in good position.
Could you repeat that a little louder about the city investing a lot of money in buildings downtown?
Well, certainly investing a lot of money, that's for sure.
People need to be aware that we're taking a lot of efforts and a lot of actions here.
And I listed the tenants there. I, you know, whom that can't see the, the listing there, but there's quite a few properties and tenants that we actually have. And a lot of, and there's a number of vacancies right now. So the potential exists for, like I said, a lot more, or a number of more tenants. Even if some of these properties are sold, which is, I think, some of the tenants on some of these properties, there's still quite a few tenants that we need to oversee.
And we're not looking for a decision tonight. We're just trying to offer this for information, so you can consider this as you move forward on budget adoption.
Right.
But it's something of importance to public works and something I felt we needed to bring to your attention, just because of our unfunded positions and the history there in public works.
This is something we could potentially fund with the four hundred thousand dollar wage and benefit contingency that we have budgeted as a line item in fiscal year fourteen.
How does it get to be sixty-five thousand? Because it says twelve percent to the, yeah, twenty-one percent, I'm sorry. For the general fund, that's about one-fifth.
It's about twelve thousand six hundred. There's another position that it talks about that Eric currently has, doing the building maintenance at this time, and it's allocated fifty, fifty percent out of the general fund for these duties.
Uh-huh.
Once this position is filled, that fifty percent will come back to the general fund. So it's a total of about sixty-five thousand impact.
Which will come from where?
From the wage and benefit contingency of four hundred thousand dollars that we have budgeted.
Okay, so can we find the sixty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's what we're saying. We, we put four hundred thousand in the budget, and we'll talk more about that here if you like. It's, it's a contingency for either step increases, COLAs, position additions, if the mayor and council wish to make any position additions or restoring existing unfunded positions. So what Michelle's saying, Councilmember Munson, is if, if you choose to do this, it would come out of that four hundred thousand. Other questions?
Thank you.
Are we projecting a net loss in the recycling and trash collection budget for this year?
For sanitation? No.
No, I don't believe so, but I'll have to look there.
This, this is for you as well.
Oh, okay. Didn't sound familiar.
I know.
That's Rodney, that's engineering, that's an engineering, yeah.
Right.
I believe it's still operating at a surplus.
Okay.
It's gotten a little bit closer this year, simply because we had the six hundred thousand dollar loan for the recycling totes.
Right.
But it's still operating at a, at a surplus.
And, you know, I, I understand that we're taking on more buildings and responsibilities as it relates to parking and things, but for me, I look at those, those items, and if we're going to take on those responsibilities, which are to some degree income-producing, then, then I think instead of sort of looking directly into the budget for where to, to, to identify it in, in, in funds already provided, you know, if we're, if we're taking on additional responsibilities in, in the parking fund and, and it demands that, that level of service, then, then to me, those types of more enterprise-related activities should share in some, some part of covering that cost.
Absolutely.
We have eighty-eight percent of the position going between property management, parking, and the remaining twelve percent is back at the general fund.
And, and what I'm saying is, a greater portion of that then should be covered in the, those arenas in which revenue is generated through a, a, a fee-oriented process.
Well, they're charging it to those funds, property management.
You want, you want to be charged more to...
Right, but what I'm saying is, if it costs you seven hundred dollars to, to do something...
Right.
That you're charging four hundred dollars to accomplish...
Yeah.
You're going to continually simply lose out. And you either not do it, or you make the cost at least increase to where you reduce the subsidy to those unrelated activities.
Yeah, it was, it was more or less based on, City Hall is a general fund operation for the most part. So, and the bill of buildings they oversee is the Market House, which is also general fund, and the Central Equipment Building, which is our office for us in the water department. So those are all general funds. So you take those three buildings, you add it to the buildings that we've, that are in the property maintenance, and then you add two decks. It, it's just a basic formula is what we kind of came, was what I kind of came up. We have twelve buildings, three in general fund. It's simple math, and that's how we broke it down. It doesn't mean that we couldn't take more money out of, I wouldn't think, out of property management, if that makes sense. And you're right, as we get more tenants and more income, that's, that's fine.
Possibly, I think maybe, even what he's saying is, include that in new rental agreements with new tenants as they come along.
I think, yeah. Well, and existing costs within your parking fund.
What's covered in the service charges, partly. At this point, the general fund doesn't make a transfer into the parking fund.
No.
Or property management, so they are completely self-supporting.
Not self-supporting if part of the mode of, of, of service is going to be provided by Public Works to oversee the deck, which will be covered by the general fund?
No. The portion that...
Will be fully covered?
Will be fully covered, covered by the parking fund.
The, the operations of parking, which is a supervisor and the part-timers and the parking enforcement, is, is all covered by parking and enforcement. Their salary and wages are covered. In fact, part of my salary is also covered out of parking because it falls under my responsibility, so.
Okay.
There is a staffing schedule in section one in the overview...
It's the very last page.
That shows you the number of positions actually being allocated to the parking fund. And there are, it's, it's got a point in there because there is a portion of, like, like Eric said, a portion of his and a couple of other people, Andrea's.
Andrea's part of her sign, yeah.
When, when can we expect to make this decision? We're going to be requested to make this decision?
We'll come back to you at a later date to, to go over a little bit further.
You know when that'll be?
Well, I think, I think you're probably going to spend the next two weeks, the seventh and fourteenth, working pretty hard on the budget, based on the schedule we have, because you're scheduled to adopt the budget on the twenty-first.
So we'll make this decision when we adopt the budget?
I think by that time, you'll make some, a decision...
Sometime in the next three weeks.
On, on the position and probably some other adjustments to the budget.
Okay.
If there are no other questions about this position, we'll move on to the next position that we'd like to propose. It's in the police department, and we'll have Mark Holtzman explain that position to you.
Good evening. Here to introduce the topic of a police recruiting and training position. Historically, at the police department, we've hired two to three people, maybe four people a year on a good year. This, when I, when I came in in the fall, we had ten vacancies. We filled eight of those ten vacancies. So we've already doubled that. We're going to double that number again by the end of the summer. We're going to hire at least sixteen people this year. So to go from four typically to eight, now doubling that again, what do the future years look like for us? It's kind of difficult to project, but they're going to be in the double digits for hiring each year for us. How do we get that done? In the past, what we did was we added this duty. We were only hiring a few people a year, so we added the duty. Somebody wore two hats. It was our internal affairs lieutenant wore two hats. He was our point of contact. He did the backgrounds. Takes two to three months to do a background testing and, and so on and so forth. With the volume that we're seeing now, and we're anticipating that volume to continue in the next few years, this is a, this is a job duty all by itself. This is a full-time job for someone and just can't be done with a normal staff wearing two hats. What we did to get to the eight, to fill eight of the ten vacancies that we have in the police academy right now, we looked for lateral applicants. These police officers were already certified somewhere. We didn't find too many. We found a lot of entry-level applicants, so they go into a police academy. What that means to the council is it takes eleven months until you get that return on your investment out on the street, instead of five, when you hire a lateral who goes through a five-month field training process. To get to the eight, we hired, we tested just about three hundred people. We did backgrounds on dozens and dozens and dozens, and that's an expense to do a background. So we didn't hit our mark of ten going in the academy, and we did that with the staff that we had. Everybody really put aside, actually, I borrowed Lieutenant Fetiu from her shift. She's one of four supervisors on her shift. She gave up three months to the project. I borrowed Sergeant Murray for a couple of months, and he put aside his, his normal duties, focused on this. And it, it is just, you know, we've come to the realization, it's a full-time job. Other departments our size and even smaller do have this as a full-time duty. The sheriff's department has a, has a full-time civilian duty. Frederick has it as a full-time duty for somebody, and we fit right in between those two agencies. So it's, it's comparable to what other departments are doing. I've talked to the chief and the sheriff in, in those agencies, and they see the same forecast we do. They've seen their increased number of hiring, just maybe it's the job market. A lot of it has to do with competitiveness on what you're able to attract. So, but the end result is a full-time testing and full-time recruiting and training person for us makes business sense. We're back filling these other positions I told you about with, with overtime. Sergeants are filling in for the lieutenant when she's not there. Other officers are filling in on training days as instructors. So I mentioned that in the, in the memo here, that there would be some slight offset for reduction. In other words, this person would teach some of those classes those other people are teaching right now. They're coming off the street to teach that, whether it be in the academy or whether it be in service. So what we're looking to do is hire somebody, a retired supervisor, somebody with some management experience, somebody with a lot of training experience that can hit the ground running, that can teach a broad spectrum of things in both our in-service academy and also support our efforts, our commitment to the Hakers Town Community College Police Academy, where we're going to get, be getting the majority of our applicants through, and, and then to work on these hundreds of backgrounds. Again, we're, we're going to get back up. Our testing to get to these nine, we have eight to nine vacancies right now. We're looking at, just to get us into the summer. That's another couple of hundred people we're going to have to go out and test, and it's going to be a big job for someone. So there is a bit of urgency with this. I know the council probably has some questions for me.
What is the salary and benefit estimate for this position?
Salary and benefit estimate would be about fifty-five thousand dollars for the position, and it would also be funded through the four hundred thousand dollar contingency that we have established for fiscal year fourteen.
Fifty, fifty-five, just the salary?
Salary and benefits. Salary would be thirty-nine thousand, and then the benefits will be the additional.
So fifty-five thousand is the number we need on this one?
Yes.
I know I threw a lot at the council there really quick. I'll take any questions you have.
In section eight, you have proposed for institution fines for parking violations. But there's not a number inserted there. I'm assuming these are new?
For which ones? I'm sorry.
It says new fees zero, one, one, zero, 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 one, two, dash, four, four, five, five, three, oh, one. Page six, section eight. Yeah, and... Do they go to the state?
No.
So there's just no figure there because we've never done this before?
No, there could certainly be the numbers in there. I don't know why that's not broken out.
Right, I mean, I'm looking at them going, if this, but it says new. I mean, I just assumed that, that, you know, you, you have all these, these areas that say, you know, no parking fire lane, that we would have had some fine associated with it, number one, and that as often as I go to food line, somebody's gotten a ticket in the last ten years, you know, for, for that purpose.
I would think that this might relate to the auxiliary police. We put some provisions in the city code to allow for the auxiliary police to begin to write for those things. So that may be why that's listed as new.
I don't know. I just had a question mark there.
I'll get you an answer.
And one other question. Do you anticipate any changes to the workload for the fingerprinting and electronic media duplication because of the changes the House Bill two eighty-one? Because right now, you charge, you charge a fee for, for that service. I'm just curious whether you expect an uptick in that activity.
Increase, increase revenue?
Well, not, I mean, revenue's a side effect, but increase activity. Because right now, you, you know, you call, you schedule to find a time to go down and get, get that process done. So I'm just curious...
I'm sorry.
If you're going to see an increase in activity.
Fingerprinting services.
Yeah, if you're going to see an increase in activity based on the changes to, to the firearms laws.
No. The answer is no, because we, we stopped the fingerprinting service at the police department. The, the state required us to hook up a live scan machine. It was about twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars, and we didn't see the return on investment there. So we got out of the business of fingerprinting, and we, we partnered up with the sheriff's department. We, so our applicants go there and we, and we direct the general public to some private companies around town to do the fingerprinting.
So this is only associated with the electronic media duplication then?
Right, then. So then that would be more of a records function.
Okay.
Copying a DVD.
I got you.
Have any other questions for Mark?
I have another question I have. Is there ever possibility of seeing another gang person on the police department that we don't have, and we've only got one at the county, since the need certainly is there?
Absolutely. That duty's also being shared by two of our detectives right now in our flex unit, and absolutely, that's a vacancy that, that needs filled, needs filled immediately.
Needs filled, and it needs filled soon. Yes, it does. And if the people don't realize it, they're going to soon realize it. But when it comes to a question of if taxes has to be increased, they're going to know why, when they're seeing it right in front of them.
Yep. Our detectives are filling that gap, and they're working hard. They're, they're burning the midnight oil, so to speak.
Yeah.
With some ceasefire grant money and overtime to fill that void and, and keeping the gang investigation front and center.
Right.
You've made quite a few arrests of that gang issue, haven't you?
Absolutely. Very proud to police, to report that they, they have made nine arrests so far in connection with those gang shootings. We served three search warrants, recovered a couple firearms, and continue to actively pursue those investigations. The patrol officers have been doing a great job. They've been burning some, some overtime, but it's grant overtime through the governor's office, doing extra foot patrols, car stops, really, really putting the effort out there to...
Yeah.
To get, to get a handle on this.
But I think that's a position that really needs to be looked at.
I agree with you. That is, that's one of our top priorities, to get that filled.
At this time, I'll turn it back over to Bruce. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Bruce. He'd like to go over employee wages and benefits, as well as the need for revenue stabilization in the coming fiscal year and future years for the general fund.
Well, yeah, what we're trying to do is direct your attention towards what we think is the crunch point of the budget and what holds the more difficult decisions for the mayor and council, not just in reference to the coming fiscal year, but in the years beyond. So, just as a refresher, if we could, turn to section seven, the general fund projections. I think that's helpful. And there's a couple pages that I'd like to revisit with you if we could. And one is section seven, page nine. I think this is a useful page for the mayor and council. You've heard us say before that in the general fund, about 70% of our expenditures are related to wages and benefits. And page nine shows you the personal services totals with the wages and part-time wages on the top half of the page, fringe benefits on the lower half. If you look back up to about a third of the way from the top, you'll see a line that says employee contingency, 400,000 for FY 1314. That's the number, that's the area of the budget that Michelle and I have been referring to that's available for collective bargaining session settlements, any adjustments you wish to make in terms of funding positions, if you wish to do any funding for those positions. So, that's an important number to look at. If you look above that 400,000, if you look a couple of numbers above, you'll see the 689 in parentheses. That's the unfunded positions in the general fund. So, those are authorized positions from the mayor and council, but there's not funding in the budget to fund those positions. So, the positions that I was talking about with Eric, his five positions are included in that 689 as unfunded positions. And if you restore any of those, then that would lower that number. But I think good for you to be aware of that page, and I think in the next three weeks, as we try to finalize and firm up the budget, we'll need to spend time focusing on that page and the information that's included there. If you would flip back then, earlier in section seven, if you look back at page two and three... And I know it's been a long day. You've been at it for three and a half hours. We're not looking for decisions tonight, but we're just trying to help the mayor and council get the most benefit from your budget discussions in the next few weeks. On section, on page two, section seven, towards the bottom, you can see again the assumptions we've made for wages and benefits. And as you know, we've got four labor contracts that are open right now with negotiations underway. And what we have in that 400,000 that I mentioned earlier is an assumption for a mid-year cost of living adjustment. There's no step increases in the budget for the coming year 1314. In the projections for 1415 and beyond, as you look at that footnote on page two, you can see that what we've assumed is a 2% cost of living adjustment in FY 1415 through 1617, 2% COLAs. Additionally, the restoration of employee step increases in FY 1718. And to be honest with you, I don't think that's enough for us to say we've got sustainable operations in the city. That means our employees go, they've already gone four years without a cost of living adjustment. They've gone three years without a step increase. This would require them to go three or four more years without a step increase and with very low cost of living adjustments. And so, I think the crunch point for the mayor and council and for the city is if we're going to have sustainable operations, we need to have more money than that 400,000 and more money in the budget in the projected years beyond 1314. We could probably limp by or limp through 1314 with a very, very small mid-year COLA if we can reach agreement with the four unions on that and no step increase and get by without a property tax rate increase. But that's not sustainable into the future, and we're not an organization that's coming off of years of four or five or six percent or higher increases in our budget. We're an organization that four years ago lost $4.2 million in state and county revenue, followed by a loss in property tax revenue the next year. And we've lived through those years by lowering our expenditures, by not having cost of living adjustments, by not filling positions. At one point, we operated with 56 fewer positions than what were budgeted in the prior year. So, we've really managed this situation through our expenditures. But an organization can't go on doing that for as long as the timing we may face here, because as we've talked about, our revenues aren't recovering. The recession is still having a very damaging impact on our budget. We expect more damage to occur in 1415 with the triennial, and we've talked about that several times with the council. And so, what I would just like to offer tonight is to encourage mayor and council to think this through. We've been listening to the mayor and council in terms of some of your discussions on priorities for community-based projects. We've heard some discussions about wanting to do certain things with staffing and how we handle our employees, and I realize you haven't reached final decisions on any of those things. But my concern is that we don't have enough revenue in the budget for the coming years to do what you'd like to do for the community and what you'd like to do for the organization. And my fear is that we don't have enough clearly to be sustainable in terms of operations and for our employees. It's the harsh realities of the recession and the impact on the city. And so, we've done a good job of managing the situation on the expenditure side. It's really, really tough to think about increasing revenues, but I think we're at a point that if we're going to have sustainable operations, if we're going to be able to position our finances to where the rating agencies look at us and say, "You're strengthening your finances. You're not simply reducing your expenditures," because they want to see stronger revenues for the city. I think we're going to need to very quickly consider strengthening the budget through revenue. And we can talk about the stormwater revenue, which takes about a year or more to implement. I think that's worthy. We can talk about red light cameras or the fire service tax, but those are all going to take time. And so, I think as the mayor and council think about this budget situation, I would encourage you to think about your priorities for the community, your desires and what you intend to do in terms of settling contracts, because ultimately, the collective bargaining contracts will get settled here with the mayor and council. And I can tell you, there's a desire by the unions to go beyond one year in those contracts. I think that's wise, if we can, for our employees as well as for the organization. And I don't think we can put off the discussion of the property tax issue too much longer. We don't have a tax rate increase in for next year, but I think in the next two weeks, we need to have some discussions on how you want to position this budget for your priorities, our employees, and the future health of the organization or the government in terms of revenues. Not easy issues. I understand that fully, and not pleasant ones to wrestle with, and I don't think they come with easy answers. But I think we're at that point. I think you've been aware of it. We talked about it in January with the retreat. You may all have different approaches to that, but from a staff standpoint, we feel like while there may be some minor adjustments we can come up with on the expenditure side or other tweaking of the budget, those aren't solutions for the problems we face. And I have to say, from the departments and their operations, they've done, I think, a tremendous job of living with less for four years, and we've had employees and unions cooperate with us in that regard. But at some point, we have to say, as an organization and as an employer, we need to do more for the employees. And I think we need to do more than waiting until 1718 for step increases. I think that's too long to wait. I don't think it's realistic for the organization. I don't think it's realistic for the unions. And I don't think simply using a small mid-year COLA this year and small 2% COLAs in the coming years is enough. So, we face a tough situation. We'll be happy to try to help work through that in any way we can, but I think that's really the crux of this budget and positioning us not just for 1314, but for the years beyond. I think we need to talk about a tax rate increase. I think it's going to need to be a sizable one to position us for that FY 1415 situation with the triennial. We're not talking about a one or two cent tax increase. If we're going to resolve the situation, I think we have to think higher. We're 12 and a half cents lower in the city because of the county adjustment. We've talked about that, and so I think we've done a good job of working with a lower tax rate for city taxpayers. But I think we're at a point where in the coming weeks, we should probably spend some time and significant time focusing on those issues, the employee wages, community benefit projects that you want to put forward in your term in office, and then how do we strengthen our operations on the revenue side? Have I said that okay for you, Michelle?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about what our esteemed city administrator has just informed us of?
And it's not new. I mean, it's...
As you say, it isn't new. We've been hearing it for years.
In the section you referenced, section seven, you turn to page nine. In the proposed budget for 1314, there is an identified $1.1 million in projected increases for fringe benefits. Is that because of the additional hires? Is it because of the mid-year COLA increase? What is the reason for the estimation of that?
It's a reflection on history. The last few years, we've seen significant increases in our health and dental benefits for employees. Fiscal year 14, we're expecting 9 to 12% increase. Last fiscal year, we saw, I think, 5 or 6% increase. The $1.1 million is actually a six... Are you looking at 13 to 14 or 14 to 15?
I'm looking at what is being estimated as actual and what is being proposed in the budget.
Oh, a decrease?
No, no, no. It's a $1.1 million increase.
Oh, down there.
In other words, we're doubling retirement payouts from 100,000 to 200,000. State fund retirement, 630 to 712. Police, fire from 923 to 140,000.
We're expecting a 9% increase or 12, 9% increase in health and dental benefits or health insurance.
Yeah, I see those two figures. That figure adds up to about 300,000, 400,000 of the 1.1 million. I'm just trying to figure out the jump from the estimated actual $7 million to $8.1 million in fringe benefit expected costs for fiscal year, for the coming fiscal year. When the estimated actual for 1213 shows that it's 400,000 less than what we budgeted, it's got to be associated with something. If we're 400,000 less than what we budgeted for this year, but we're expecting to jump up 1.1 million, I'm just trying to figure out what's the reason we're expecting to jump up over a million dollars.
Well, in health and, I'm sorry, in fringe benefits, we also have retirement. So, as employee salaries go up, we're going to see a significant increase in our retirement payments for police and fire, as well as for Maryland State Retirement. We'll also see an increase in our FICA benefit payments as a result of any increases that we propose for our health benefits. Retirement payouts are expected to remain pretty flat. Workers' compensation is expecting a 5% increase. Over the previous year, we've also seen significant increases in our police and fire rates as compared to rates that we have for our non-police and fire, non-public safety employees. That accounts for the bulk of the increases that we'll see in fiscal year 14. And then down in the retiree portion, we're going from 1.1 million to 1.2. It's a small increase, still 9%. It's still associated with the expected increase that we'll see in our health insurance costs.
So, this $8.1 million, which is a million more than what we're expected to actually experience this year, is what we expect to occur next year without any changes?
Based on, based on the amount of the increases and also some additional positions that had previously been...
And that's what I'm trying to figure out, is it based on these positions?
It is. It's both.
Because when you say, when you say it's based on what we've experienced...
It's based on COLAs, it's based on...
I mean, what we're experiencing this year is a $400,000 decrease from what we budgeted.
And part of that had to do with salaries were a little bit lower than we budgeted, so then our FICA expense from our employer's standpoint should also be down. So, like, if you look at FICA, it's down a little bit, and salaries are down a little bit. With the salaries being down a little bit, then we should also see some of our pension and retirement costs be down a little bit. But then, in our fiscal year 14 budget, we do have several new positions that we're going to do all year. We had several police positions that we added. So, that combined with the projected increases that we think we're going to experience on the health insurance side, primarily health, dental, and workers' comp are the big areas is the reason for the $1.1 million increase.
Which gets us back to the same, almost the same dollar amount as three years ago, which was also 8.1 million in total.
Correct.
With the same number of employees as you have now?
No.
No, we have a smaller number of employees.
Right. You've got less employees, and now you're back to an expense you had with more employees.
Right. That's primarily a result of health insurance increases over the last few years compounding each year.
Workers' comp expense has gone up almost 300,000 in those three years.
And some of the pension costs?
Pensions will rise based on what the state gives us or what the actuary gives us on the police and fire pension.
Which was projected at seven and a half and is now more than 12, right?
It's projected to be 12.01, I think, for fiscal year 14. It's under 12% right now.
Comments, questions, especially as pertains to the suggestion that we look at higher property tax rates? I know Lou's all for it.
I'm not going to comment now. I think everything has to be comparative to what the value added is for, and we'll have to look at it. It's a tough decision, because, you know, we're trying to attract investment, and then people say, "Excuse me, your tax rate is now more than the county's?" I mean, you know, we're almost at that level for us. So, it's a tough question, and I'm not making a yes or no comment. I don't want people not commenting to be a sign of agreement. We're just, we've absorbed what Bruce had to say. He said it very well, and we just have to weigh the hard choices, as he says. Hard choices. Hard choices.
And this council had also asked for information in the past regarding the cost of one step and the impact on employees. For a full year in the general fund, one step would cost about $530,000 for wages and benefits. Grand total for all funds would be about $650,000. Of the 424 active employees we currently have, only 49% of them would actually receive an increase. Therefore, 51% of our employees would get no increase if we simply did steps and no COLA.
What are the amounts for the COLA, again? Simple, straight across the board, COLA, 1%?
COLA, 1% for the general fund, I believe was around $290,000, and then, I think that was, we're all funding, oh, that was, I'm sorry, that was a half year. Let me find that.
Yeah.
About the same.
$290,000 was a half a year.
Half a year for the general fund.
Between 2% to 3%.
Say that again, Michelle.
$290,000 for general fund would be a COLA of 2% to 3% for a half a year only.
Okay, what is 1%?
I think she said one step increase, right?
One step's 530.
Okay, and what is a 1% COLA, so you can do it multiples?
For the year.
For the year, yeah.
We have that, let me just-
So you can do a multiple?
Sure. Well, for the general fund, it would be-
Just under $200,000.
Just under $200,000 for the whole year.
So 1% COLA for a whole year would be approximately $200,000, between 190 and 200.
In the general fund.
Just for the general fund.
And I know you've remarked that employees haven't received an increase in four years. What is the freeze, so to speak, in which, in other words, how many steps behind would you estimate the employee base to be?
Right now, it's three years' worth of steps. However, based on the grade scales, there are some employees who may go four or five years without actually getting an increase based on the union or the labor.
So not every employee gets a step every year, and thus not everybody is three steps behind?
Not everybody.
But they're three steps behind in their longevity. Meaning that if they're in that five-year break, they potentially could have gotten an increase next year, whereas they're not because they've been frozen for three.
And the only way to correct that is to count those years.
That would be-
Or that next step.
Mm-hmm. And if we did that, there would be some employees who would get maybe four or five pay increases, because to move them up three or four steps on the management scale, there's not that big break of five years between maybe steps three to nine, like there is in some of the other labor groups.
Right, even though the step is over a number of years, the pay isn't frozen for that period in which it occurs, correct?
Yes, it is frozen for some of the union groups.
For all employees? No employee has gotten a step increase?
No, employees have gotten step increases, but even if we restored steps, not all employees would get an increase because-
Some aren't eligible based on the pay schedule they're on.
Right. And based on the calculation I did, 51% of our employees would get no increase at all if we simply moved longevity up one step.
But nobody's behind like three or four steps?
They're behind three longevity years, management employees, some of them, yes.
Not actual steps.
Yeah, some management employees are.
That's the part that I'm having a little trouble understanding when folks talk to me. Is there any way you could break down the cost of these step increases or have a little more clarity on-
By group?
Yeah, how many people would be affected and what the costs, based on how, you know, whether they get a step increase every year for the next three years, or steps combined with COLAs? I think that might be helpful for-
Different scenarios.
Different scenarios.
I just need to resort it, I can get that for you.
I think that's it, yeah.
Is that the end? Before you leave, I do want to make this comment. I think I remember reading on the internet, just within days, that your department won a very nice award with regard to the work you do on budgeting for the city of Hagerstown. And I think we all want to say congratulations and good work.
Thank you.
We're fortunate that we have such watchdogs in your department.
We have a good group in financing, thank you.
And I know we did not, I don't think we got through everything.
We didn't cover the last year's bullets, I can cover that, but it's 8 o'clock.
No, I think everyone's eyes are glazing over at this point. And so I think we'll just revisit that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Would you like us to set up a work session on the budget next Tuesday, the 7th, in the afternoon?
I think-
Makes sense for the mayor and council, the next two?
I think that would be appropriate.
Try to work in 90 minutes to two hours the next couple weeks.
Mm-hmm. You could always even look at having a special meeting, I know that there's other items on the agenda.
And some of those, we can push back, too. I mean, I think the crucial thing is to give you time next Tuesday on the budget. Does that make sense?
That's what I understood we were doing next week, was a budget discussion.
And the last few items probably won't be very lengthy, so next budget section would be a good time for you to come with a, prepare with any questions that you have about any of the other sections or things that we've already reviewed.
And of course, any council member can contact you in the interviewing time-
In the meantime, absolutely.
-to try to get clarity on any questions they have.
Yeah, please do contact the Michelles if you have questions and you want to clarify anything. It's a big budget and it's pretty complex.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, finance team. I guess at this point, we'll do city administrators' comments.
None for me this evening.
All right, council comments. Who would like to begin? Mr. Metzner?
Hi, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Nye? Mr. Munson?
This is a little tongue-in-cheek, but I don't believe anybody's going to accuse Bruce of being Santa Claus.
Ooh. Ouch.
Okay, Mr. Alshar?
Let's see. I'm supposed to remind everybody that an invitation was sent out from Service Coordination to host a self-direction conference at Ramada Plaza. I don't know, the details are in the invitation. And we don't get cable, so my wife's not watching anyway. So that's as much information as I can glean from that email.
Is that it? Mr. Brubaker?
Yes, I just want everybody to be clear that we did not raise taxes. Some people inferred from the article today on the front page that we raised taxes. We do not raise taxes. We have not yet or determined at all to raise taxes next year. The proposed budget does not propose to change them. Most particularly, we do not raise taxes. There were changes in the tax base. There's a state formula that we have to report that, and that's what gets advertised. The county does the same thing. So we have not raised taxes. I had two different people said, "See, you raised taxes." So we did not.
And you said, "Not yet."
I did not say not yet.
I'm just teasing you. Well, the only, I have a couple, just real quick things. Last Thursday, I stopped by Salem Avenue Elementary School, they were having their celebration of learning. There's one at Morgansville Elementary tomorrow evening, and it's just really great to get out in the community and see what's happening in the schools and all the good work that the students and teachers are doing. Today, we celebrated at the Schmankerl Stube, their 25th anniversary in business here in downtown Hagerstown. They'll be having a celebration for their anniversary in conjunction with the opening of the Washington County Free Library. And it was just really great to be able to honor them and all the work that they've done and contributions they've made to the community. And just if anyone's planning ahead, there is, May is Bicycle Month, and there will be a Ride with the Mayor on Saturday, May 11th, at 9 o'clock, starting at Fairgrounds Park. And that's all I got. Meeting is adjourned.